It's the best I can do tonight. Calling to order this meeting Tuesday, January 28th of the Noblesville Common Council. Welcome, everyone. Glad to have you here. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mike Davis, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. For the roll call, Evelyn Lee, please, Ms. Lee.
Mr. Air.
Present.
Mr. Boyce. Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Wiles. Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from January 14th meeting. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, hand vote. Raise your right hand, please. Everybody, seven oh. And approval of tonight's agenda. So moved. Mr. O'Connor.
Second.
And Mr. Peterson. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Agenda is approved. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present, do you have any? I do not have any here with me. Doesn't mean it's too late. There are cards outside, just outside the doors. If you want to have a comment this evening, fill out one of those forms and give it to Ms. Lee, please. Thank you. Council committee reports. Finance, is that it tonight?
Maybe.
Yeah, okay. Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. President, the Finance Committee met January 23rd. There are a number of the items we discussed are on the agenda this evening, so I won't go into those. We had a rather robust conversation about Friends of Central Pool. They're in need of some funding for some basic maintenance repair and things that they're going to need to do to maintain and keep the pool functioning. That funding and resolution related there, too, will likely be on the next council agenda after we see it again in finance. But suffice to say, the pool has been operated by the Friends for a number of years, I think to the benefit of, and it's a nice amenity for the citizens. And they need some additional support in order to keep that as a quality facility. So we'll see more on that at the next meeting. Chad Canet called in to talk a little bit about the Public Safety Communications Lit. I had expressed some concern or had some questions about how Noblesville was going to stay in the forefront of funding related to the lit that we all voted for for public safety. He is going to be center and squarely involved in what's going on from a committee aspect. So he's also going to be at one of our upcoming finance committees to talk a little more about it. So I think that's something we need to make sure that we stay on top of. We did go through the allocation of dollars from the capital improvement bond that we passed towards the end of the year and was funded, most of which were park items and some various other things that we had agreed upon. Talked a bit about House Bill 1412, which has to do with Hamilton County Lit reallocation. That has been introduced at the House level. I think it's in the Ways and Means Committee, so we'll have to track its progress. Talked about in conference carry forward. We'll see that, I think, at the next meeting, so we get an update on where that all sorted out. And the claims come to us with a favorable recommendation from the Finance Committee. So it was a good meeting.
Right. Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. So no other committee reports. So we will vote on the claims. Is there a motion to approve the claims?
So moved.
Mr. Air, I think.
Second.
Mr. Peterson, second, I think, whoever you say it is. Okay. So all those in favor of approval of the claims, please raise your right hand. And there's seven oh. Thank you. Previously discussed ordinances, council to consider ordinance number 01-01-20 and ordinance approving additional appropriations in the debt service building refunding bonds of 2014 Series B. Mr. Barris.
Mr. President, council members, got Jeff's name on the agenda, but I'm going to be filling in for him on this one tonight. As was mentioned, this is the second reading of an additional appropriation ordinance that deals with a fund that we use to pay debt service on some 2014 bonds that we issued to finance renovations of this city hall building. Because it's the second reading, I'm not going to get too far into this, but to quickly recap, this is sort of a technical budget cleanup issue where for the last couple of years, what essentially happened was the appropriation out of this debt service fund was slightly below what was actually needed for the payments out of the fund. So there's always been cash in the fund. We've made the correct payment amount, so there's nothing really wrong. But as a matter of best practice, this ordinance corrects the issue by appropriating additional $4,665 out of the fund. I'm happy to go into more of what happened here, but in the absence of interest in that, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Barris? This is a matter of public hearing, so I am opening the public hearing.
President.
Mr. O'Connor.
Seeing no one come forward from the public, I move that we close the public hearing on ordinance 01-01-20.
There a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 01-01-20?
President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I'll make, I move to approve ordinance number 01-01-20, additional appropriation ordinance.
Second.
Motion and a second. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee.
Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Seven zero. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you very much. Council to consider ordinance 02-01-20 as amended and ordinance regarding a special consideration for the construction of an automobile service use Bell Tire, a part of the Saxony Corporate Campus Plan Development District and the corporate campus located north of Campus Parkway and north of Tegler Drive as extended and east of Bowden Road. Ms. Yelton.
Again, this was introduced at your last meeting. This is a special consideration for the construction of Bell Tire Store in the Saxony Corporate Campus. It is a part of our overall corporate campus. Again, this was sent to you from the Plan Commission with a nine in favor, zero opposed or recommendation for adoption. This is basically the elevation drawings of this proposed building. The overhead garage doors do not face Campus Parkway. They are basically on the south side of the, I mean, on the north side of the building. With that, I will ask if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Yelton? Thank you very much. Does anyone else want to speak on this matter?
John Neerswicki, 136 Parliament Court. I'm here on behalf of Bell Tire and Christopher Enright Architects. I'm with Wolfert, we're the civil engineer. Just also happy to answer any questions you guys may have. Just wanted to introduce.
Questions? Okay. So if I'm doing this right, Ms. Lee, we need a motion to amend ordinance 02-01-20 first. So we need that motion. Motion to amend.
Mr. President.
As presented.
Mr. President.
Mr. Air.
I move to amend ordinance 02-01-20 as amended, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 02-01-20 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor? Seven zero.
Mr. President.
Mr. Air.
I move to approve ordinance 02-01-20 as amended and ordinance regarding a special consideration for the construction of an automobile service use Bell Tire.
Second.
This is also, we have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote. So Ms. Lee.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz. Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Air.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Seven zero. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Moving to miscellaneous, number one, council to consider acceptance of conflict of interest disclosure. Ms. Lee.
Yes, good evening. Mr. Peterson has submitted his annual conflict of interest disclosure for work he does with the facade grant program. If Mr. Peterson has anything else to say?
I don't know if there's any questions. The facade grant program's been great. We do projects over the years, and some of the projects go back two or three years. And as financing becomes available or buildings change hands, a lot of times they go into the facade grant committee, and they'll check the architectural assistance box, and we don't know it. We don't know when it's going to happen. And so our clients are getting reimbursed for work that we've done. It's not, we don't actually get paid by the city, but a lot of times our work is reimbursed to the client, so.
Thank you. So are there any other questions of Ms. Lee's here? No? Okay. I need a motion to accept the conflict of interest.
I move to accept the conflict of interest disclosure from Mr. Peterson.
Second.
Motion and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Oh, I'm sorry, six oh one. She got it. Luckily, she's taking notes over there. Right, Ms. Lee? Holding me up over here. Okay. Moving on miscellaneous, number two, council to consider resolution RC-1-20, a resolution adopting the 2020 Noblesville Comprehensive Plan. Ms. Reed.
Good evening. I would like to start out by thanking those of you that took time to review this document cover to cover, all almost 300 pages of it. We know that you provided input, talked to constituents, attended meetings, so thank you very much for that. As you're all aware, this process has strategically spanned two administrations. Many of you were involved in the multiple phases of this project. Some of you were on either a steering committee or a roundtable, excuse me, a roundtable in phase one and/or were on a steering committee in phase two. The result of this two-plus years of community consensus building will serve us well into the future. The purpose of a comprehensive master plan is to guide the overall community development and economic development efforts of the city as a whole. It acts as a big-picture strategy that helps staff review investment and development opportunities against a series of policy objectives and action steps. This document will help balance strategic growth with infrastructure and utility updates and ensure that we can adequately provide the expected services of our citizens. It is our goal to have a checklist of attainable and measurable outcomes so that we can verify that we're all moving forward in the same direction. The plan is meant to be long-range and looks out 15 to 20 years, but generally should be reevaluated every five years or so, if not sooner as big investment comes into the city. Quick history, I didn't dig all the way back, but I can find a comprehensive plan adopted in 1995, one in 2003, and most recently, one that was done in 2013 but adopted in 2014, which actually, council vote was six to zero favorable. And in 2016, we did a progress update, basically saying what we've done in the previous plan to date, and that vote was favorable eight to zero. I know that each one of you has heard me talk about public input over the last at least two weeks, that we've talked about many things. Again, it spanned two administrations. We had administration input from previous and current throughout both phases. Phase one included the Downtown Streetscape Master Plan, Housing Study, and Housing Policy Guide, and collectively, the process had over 40-plus input meetings, online and onsite surveys with over 1,600 total responses. So a lot of public input over two-plus years. Quick procedure, and then I'll turn it over to our consultants. Phase one was done by American Structure Point, started in October of 2017 and ended, I think we got the final document from them, status in July of 2019. Phase two started by HWC Engineering, who's here tonight in September of 19, and we'll go through February even later as we talk about the next couple of additional scope options. After the plan is adopted, hopefully February 11th, we'll work on an infill design toolkit, land use pattern book, and additional future land use updates. So this is not the last you're going to see of this document. This document itself was filed in December of 2019, introduced to you all at your December 17th meeting, at which time everybody was provided a hard copy and electronic copy, Plan Commission and Council. January 21st, we had a public hearing at Plan Commission. Plan Commission forwards this to you with a unanimous favorable recommendation with zero public comment. Tonight, you guys will hear a presentation from our consultants, HWC Engineering. They're going to outline any updates since the last time it was introduced to you in December. There have been a few significant amendments in the future land use categories due to some public input and conversations we've had, and you'll see a lot more of grammar and sort of wording updates and clarification in front of you. Staff is recommending tonight that this item have a second reading and a vote on February 11th. It will allow for even further input, additional transparency, and also so that the document can come to you in February as a full finished document. You'll get a little cheat sheet that shows all of the changes that have been made, so you don't have to reread everything, but it will be a clean document, ready to go. So that's it for me. If you have any questions of me, I will answer them now. If not, I'll turn it over to Cory.
Any questions of Ms. Reed at this point?
I'm also available after Cory presents.
Yeah, you'll be available during.
Yes. I'm not going anywhere.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening.
Bear with me for just a minute while I get the technology set up.
Even though Ms. Reed introduced you, please state your name and address.
Absolutely. My name is Cory Daly. I'm with HWC Engineering. And we've been able to, we've been brought in to help with the last phase of the comprehensive plan. So she mentioned phase one and phase two. We've been helping with phase two since October roughly of last year, and we're going to help get it through adoption, and then there's a couple of other tasks that will happen after adoption. What I want to do tonight, this is actually the third time we've presented this in this room. If some of you recall, when you were on the council in December, we came and presented. Unfortunately, at that time, the Unfortunately, at that time, the technology didn't work, but you had printed copies, and I think you could see the presentation. We were back at Plan Commission at the last meeting and presented it, which got the favorable recommendation to get it here to you this evening. What I want to do this evening is spend a few minutes going over a couple of key things, three topics in general. The first, I want to actually dig into some of the numbers that Sarah briefly mentioned with public outreach. I know there's been a lot of questions and a lot of discussion about exactly what the public outreach for the processes look like. We've got some numbers that we'll go over to help kind of clarify that. And then I really just wanted to spend a few minutes talking about some of the major content changes that have-- we know have taken place specifically with the future land use and a couple of key items since the first public review draft was published on December 9. And then finally, I want to just kind of go over and just talk in a little bit more detail about the final editing process and those dates and things like that. So feel free to stop me at any time with questions or comments or anything like that. So as Sarah reiterated, I'd like to reiterate what Sarah said. It's important to remember that the ideas in the comprehensive plan that you have in front of you, that you're considering for adoption or approval, is really the culmination of a lot of ideas that came from a lot of different projects since roughly 2017, mid to late 2017. On the screen right now are some of the logos from those plans. You have the housing analysis, the downtown study, the parks plan, previous planning projects, including one that wasn't directly related to Noblesville, but we're also incorporating in to this document, which was the White River Vision Plan, which has a lot of weight for the future of your community. So I wanted to spend just a little bit of time going through some of these public involvement activities, because all of these public involvement activities have fed the ideas in the plan. So the things that you see were really coming out of these processes that had happened previously. So starting with the Downtown Streetscape Master Plans, just a real quick summary of the activities that took place with that. You had eight individual public input meetings. There was an online survey that ran between February and March of 2018 and had over 800 responses. And you had an onsite market analysis survey, which was conducted, and it-- more than 40 individual interviews were recorded with that. So pretty significant outreach with that. Moving forward, you had your housing study and your housing policy guide, which were really two separate processes, and one came out of the other. But in total, between those two projects, you had 12 combined public input meetings. You had another online survey directed specifically towards housing that had 620 responses, and that was conducted between December and January 2017 into 2018. You had a lot of internal meetings with various city departments and had presentations at Plan Commission and City Council as part of the public adoption process with those. So again, a pretty robust public involvement process. Comprehensive Plan Phase One, again, you had a pretty robust process with that. That took place starting in 2018 and ran basically through July of 2019, so last year. With that, you had five individual steering committee meetings. You had 15 roundtable meetings, which consisted of five focus groups essentially of interested individuals on specific topics, and each one of those groups met three times. You also had an online survey that was conducted between April and July that was focused more on the visual aspects of the community and visual preferences, but it was still another online opportunity. And last but not least, when we came in in Phase Two of the current comprehensive plan update, which began in October and will run through adoption in February, we had three steering committee meetings. And it's important to note that the steering committee that we had with Phase Two consisted of people that were involved with the Phase One steering committee, but there were also additional people that were invited into that to give a little bit different perspective, so it was a separate committee process. We had multiple stakeholder meetings with individuals, including Hamilton County and Wayne Township, as part of the future growth plans in the comprehensive plan. We did conduct two public open houses, which were here in City Hall, and we had multiple Plan Commission or will have had multiple Plan Commission and City Council meetings and presentations as part of the public involvement process and the adoption process. So in summary, if you look at the combined outreach and stakeholder efforts between December of 2017 and now, you're looking at more than 26 public outreach meetings, and that does include the public adoption meetings that I've mentioned previously. Over 1,500 and roughly 1,560 online survey responses between the three different surveys that have been conducted. You've had eight individual steering committee meetings specifically to the comprehensive plan update, the whole update. More than 55 stakeholder roundtables and/or interviews that have been conducted, and easy to say dozens of meetings with elected officials, appointed officials, executives, city staff, and other individual stakeholder meetings. So in a nutshell, there has been a tremendous amount of public involvement and input that has gone into the document that you have in front of you this evening. A lot of that work predates our work here, but we've been able to work with staff and compile all those numbers and really roll that in, so you guys have a good summary of what that looks like. So moving on, this page is the individual acknowledgements page out of the comprehensive plan itself, and this is just a list of all the different people throughout the two phases, individuals that were involved heavily with the process. You can see, obviously, the common council, Plan Commissioner, city staff. You have the steering committee, both Phase One and Phase Two lists, and also all the roundtable members. And, you know, the list takes up an entire page in the document, so you can tell that there have been a significant number of individuals who have put significant amounts of time towards developing the vision in the document. It's an impressive page in the document. So with that, I'd like to move on and just briefly talk about some of the major components of the content that we know have changed to this point. This is going to focus mainly on land use and a couple of statistical things that were brought up through public comment. As Sarah had mentioned, and I'll touch on it in a little bit more detail in a minute, we do have a list of other changes that accompanied the plan at the Plan Commission. You guys should have a copy of in your agenda packet. That's going to be a rolling list that's going to accompany the final document, so you'll be able to turn to specific page numbers and see where changes were made. So key points on some of the recent changes that I'd like to bring to your attention. First of all, what we're doing right now is really, I call it fine-tuning. This is all based on comments that we've received from public, from the review draft that was published on December 9. So this copy's been out there for well over a month now. We have received a number of email questions and comments and responses. We've also gotten a significant number of individual markups from a lot of you. Thank you very much for that. But city staff has taken another look at it. It's passed through a lot of hands in its current form. We haven't updated it since December 9 because we'd like to do all the changes at once, but that's what that list is for, keeping track of all those changes. Comments were received from the public, obviously, elected officials and Noblesville staff. And then the highest percentage of comments that we've gotten were related to a lot of content that was developed during Phase One before we were involved, and it's inconsistencies with language, typos, punctuation. It's really just the cleanup of the content from a punctuation and grammar perspective. It's not substantial changes to the text that would have an impact on things like future land uses and things like that. But where we do have those, you'll see those. So I wanted to very briefly touch on two or three of the most significant changes that we're aware of and just bring those to your attention so you can, if you haven't yet, you can review them. The first are some minor changes to the future land use map to clarify and better define uses in specific areas of your community. This is really the first wholesale future land use map update you guys have undergone in quite some time. So it-- just by nature, because of the expanse of your city, there's going to be a lot of little adjustments. We did a pretty good job out of the gate getting that right because of the conversations we've had, but there's been a couple of minor areas that have been brought up since that December 9 document that we want to make sure need to-- just things that have been brought to our attention that we need to go in and clean up. Future land use by nature is a little bit broader. It's-- but you're putting-- you're identifying areas on a map, so people get-- look at it from a parcel-specific nature, so we're trying to clean those little things up. There are going to be some refinements to clarify the intent of some of the statistics contained in the plan, and I'll touch on two of the most significant changes with that this evening. And then we-- one of the biggest changes was actually working with a group of local people that were interested in seeing a traditional residential land use within your current core downtown neighborhoods, existing neighborhoods. And we worked with them to set up a new traditional residential land use and actually identify that area on the future land use map. So I did want to-- the statistical changes that we looked at actually relate to your future growth plan, which is the appendix in the back of the plan. It's that Wayne Township portion and that kind of eastern Noblesville area. So the first slide in front of you right now is a slide that we've added in and updated. It's basically showing your population growth dynamics. So just the highlight of this slide is the darker blue areas on the map are the areas where you are currently experiencing the highest percentage of population growth or the projected highest percentage of population growth. It's still consistent with what we presented all along. It's just a different way to display the information. So the dark blue corner is down in the southwest, kind of that 37, 32 and southeast of that, near the corporate campus and moving towards 69, and then obviously, that southeast corner at 69, near 146th Street area. They're the areas you expect to see with higher population growth within the community, if you know anything about Noblesville, but this map displays it. And then moving on in a little bit deeper dive, these are-- the next map is actually displaying similar type of information, but this is specific to housing growth or projected housing growth areas. Again, just like the blue map, the green map shows the darker green areas are the areas where you can expect the highest growth. And the reason these are important is because it ties in with your future land use policy, but more specifically, that future growth area policy that we have towards the back of the plan that really shows where your future growth areas are going to be moving into Wayne Township into the future. So these were two of the most significant mapping and statistical changes, and I wanted to draw your attention to those because of the importance and how they relate specifically to this area, which we are calling the growth opportunity area in that growth-- future growth plan. And you saw this map, and this map's been presented in all the previous presentations. Nothing has changed on this. I just have it up here to show the relationship between where your projected growth is and where we're saying some of these future growth opportunity areas are for your community. It's where the land's available. It's where you're going to see growth. It's where the transportation infrastructure and some of the other key elements are in place for you to be-- to see those growth pressures over time. So this is-- these are the land use types that we had in our previous presentation. These haven't changed significantly since the draft that we put out. What has changed is we did add, in that top neighborhood category, we did add a traditional residential land use description, which is summarized here. And it's basically looking at areas that are established neighborhoods where a single-family residential with the high diversity of design types and styles, primarily because of the timeframes in which they were developed over time, and areas where you're kind of saying you want to maintain that walkable grid, you want to maintain that traditional neighborhood development, and you don't want some of the newer types of development or higher-density developments to start to encroach on these areas. This future land use category is shown on this updated map in front of you as the kind of burnt umber or dark brown section right in the middle of the downtown area. You can see on the right-hand side, traditional residential is the second land use down in the legend, and you can see how that relates to 38, 37, right in your downtown core. So this is the most up-to-date version of the future land use map that reflects that change that has come through the public comment process. With that, moving-- those are the key things that I wanted to call your attention to with changes. I did want to briefly touch on the document edits and the adoption process. So like we talked about a few times already, the proposed content edits have all been summarized in an accompanying memo. You have the current version of that in your agenda package. That package does not directly call out each individual grammar, spelling, or punctuation. Eyre, we've got comments on that, and those will all be addressed. What is reflected in that document are the most significant changes that you'll see. So if there's a paragraph or a couple of sentences of text that have a substantial change in the way something reads, you'll see those summarized, but just the minor edits are not included in that. Final edits will all be made based on the outcomes of the hearing tonight and any other comments we get between now and basically next week. We're going to make all those edits at one time, and then our plan is to get a clean copy of the document, the full comprehensive plan updated and out before your next meeting in time for it to be included in your packet and you to have some time to review it if you'd like. So the goal is to make these edits within the next week, basically, and get a clean copy of this out, so you have that copy to look at before you actually go to your vote in February. One thing I did want to highlight, though, with the comprehensive plan, and I'm sure most of you are aware of this, but I think it's worth noting again, comprehensive plans are vision documents. They're-- Chris Hamm mentioned it tonight. They're kind of like a playbook for your community. Because of the dynamics in your community and you're grateful enough, you have the ability and you've got the growth happening, you should expect that this is a document that's going to have edits and changes over time. So as Sarah mentioned, you know, you're going to look at a wholesale or a big update of this every five years or so because of the dynamics you have in the community, but you're going to, on a periodic basis, you should expect to see some changes to this plan as the needs and the desires within the community change. And you'll start to see those come up over time. You can't predict when they happen, but you'll be able to see this again and again and again over the next number of years. It really is a working document. So the next steps, obviously, we got through the Plan Commission hearing, January 21st. We're here tonight, and then the goal is to come back in February 11th, if you're so inclined, and hopefully have adoption at that point. With that, that's all I've had-- I have for this evening for the presentation, but I'm happy to answer questions or take comments or anything that you may have at this point now.
Any questions?
I have one more thing in there.
Okay.
Because of the fact that we are amending this document at the council level, it will go back to Plan Commission after the February 11 hopeful adoption for recertification through the Plan Commission, just based on these changes. That's the procedure. I forgot to mention that earlier. Sorry.
And I did have one quick question about the procedure. You said the new document-- we're not going to get a whole nother new document, but you're going to give us a page that may say on page 132, here are the changes. Is that the way it's going to be?
Yeah. It'll be-- you'll have a digital PDF version that you'll be able to flip through, and yes, the memo will actually have the page number. This was changed. You can go to that specifically and see that change that was made. So it's going to be-- it's going to make it a lot easier for you to flip through and see those changes that were made, so.
And anyone that wants a hard copy for your day-to-day efforts, we will make you a hard copy.
Yes.
It'll be a whole-- I mean, you could get a whole copy of it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that's what I'm going to want.
Yeah. I'm a paper copy.
And so will I.
Yeah.
Any other questions at this point?
Mr. President, just a comment. I think it's been said, but this-- there's really three things I take from this. It's really a guide, and change is really the operative word with this, so as much as you'd like to think you can forecast 10 years, 15 years out, things will change. So at least now we've got a roadmap for development. And the other thing that I think is a key component is the measurable output and look at what are we doing and what have we done, and is it tracking along with what we think we wanted to see? So I spent probably the better part of a week going through this, a couple hours at a time, and I would encourage anybody that's really interested in what the direction of the city is to go sit down and read it. You don't have to read it all at once, but go through the various sections and get a good feel for what I think is a pretty good roadmap. I mean, there's always things that we can tweak and change, but in the end, I think it gives us some really good direction, so I appreciate all your help and efforts. But I'll look forward to seeing the red line version. It'll be a little easier to read.
Yeah. Thank you for having us involved. It's been fun to work on, and we'll get that to you, so.
Other questions? I had one, and it was more of a legal question.
I know. I know.
One plus one.
Maybe for Mr. Howard or Ms. Bennett. Both are-- one thing I, when I look at this, I look at some of the terminology, and I'm thinking, okay, what, five years from now, will a developer look at this and try to change some things and then say-- I'm trying to do a hypothetical here. There's a situation where they go back to this document and say, wait a minute, you guys have already approved that point in your comp plan. How can you say it's different now? And so if that's a well-stated question, I'm not sure it is, but that's my concern.
Two reasons for comp plan. First of all, it's
First of all, statute mandates in planning, there's not a lot of that, you must do this, but you must have a comp plan, and it is expected to be foundational. But it is that. It is exactly that. It is a plan. It is a scoping document. And if you look at it, there's a lot of interrelationships of it as far as transportation, trails, recreation, economic components. But it is exactly that. It is a plan. When you get down and go and start looking at the actual zoning map, there may be a zoning map, but as things change and times evolve, you in your sound discretion have the ability to rezone. One of the ways we've done that a lot is with the PD, because there's a lot of issues early on. We didn't really know what we liked and what we didn't like, but we wanted to see what they proposed. And that, the P, we thought to the comp plan, which is the 10,000-foot level, and that, that's not legally binding, but it is a plan. It's something, and you'll hear good planning presentations say, this is consistent with your comp plan, or it is slightly different from your comp plan, because the plan, we should look at the time and the energy and the input, it is foundational. The next level then becomes, you know, the general land use plan. What are we zoning this at? And then we go down, we can always rezone. This is not a legally mandated document. You can always rezone. You can always really get in the weeds and do the PDs, all the things that we do, like we go back, and the first thing Sarah's department looks at, and somebody comes in, what does the comp plan say about this? And the first thing you'll hear in their presentation, this is consistent, it is inconsistent, or it's kind of consistent with your comp plan.
Does that help?
Yes.
The key word's not legally binding.
Yes.
That was the key word.
It's not etched in stone. It's a plan. It's a guideline.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right, so you have requested that we delay any vote until February 11.
Correct.
Okay.
You'll have a second reading at that time where you'll be presenting the final changes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving to transfers. Number one, council to consider transfer TA-02-20 in appropriation transfer in the general fund to realign appropriations for the GIS staff restructuring. Mr. Barris.
Mr. President, council members, Sam Barris with OFA Staff. Once again, this first transfer appropriation resolution of the night, TA-02-20, as mentioned, deals with three GIS staff positions that were previously housed in the IT department. Going forward, starting in 2020, these positions are instead going to be housed out of the planning department, where they've actually been physically located for the past few months already. This transfer essentially just moves appropriation authority that was budgeted in the IT department over to planning. It's mostly in the 100-series personal services category. However, there's a small component that's 300-series for, I think mostly related to conference fees that are paid on behalf of these three staff people. So that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barris. Any questions?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Ayer.
I move we approve transfer TA-02-20.
Second.
Motion and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Transfer number two, council to consider transfer TA-03-20 in appropriation transfer in the motor vehicle highway fund to correct funding in the street department's 2020 budget for existing position. Mr. Barris.
Council members, as stated, this transfer resolution relates to the street department. This one's a bit unfortunate. What essentially happened was we had a position in the street department, an operator position, that was already existing that was mistakenly left out of the adopted 2020 budget. So it's not a situation where it's a new position and they forgot to request it or something. They already had the person, and it ended up being left out of the workforce plan, which is the system we use to develop our personal services budget. So this transfer moves appropriation from contingency in the motor vehicle highway fund over to the street department to cover this operator position, to correct that issue. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I move we approve TA-03-20 appropriation transfer resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is also a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Transfer three, council to consider transfers TA-04-20 AD appropriation transfers in multiple funds to reflect the 1% pay adjustments approved in the 2019 salary ordinance. Mr. Barris again.
Thank you, council members. This agenda item is actually for transfer resolutions dealing with separate funds, but they're all related to the same topic. So this all relates to pay raises for city employees that were, was passed in the 2020 budget. And so we're recapping just a bit how the budget dealt with these pay raises. So as many of you know, the 2020 budget includes enough funding to give each position a raise of up to 4%. However, that was treated in sort of two different buckets. So there was a 3% component that was for across-the-board pay raises, basically meant to be for cost of living adjustments. Those amounts were included directly in departmental budgets, so there's no further action required that's taken care of. There was a second bucket for the remaining 1% component that was budgeted into non-departmental contingency. That was done for a couple reasons, one being wanted to give police and fire some ability to make some rank adjustments in their pay scale. And also, there was at one point some discussion with council members about giving department directors some discretion over how the 1% would be divided among their staff. That's not what ended up actually happening. They've been directed to give them as an across-the-board pay raise this year, but by separating, by separating out the 1% into contingency like this, we've created the structure, whereas if the administration and council members were interested in going around in a future year, we'd at least have a framework for how to accomplish that. So this resolution, what it literally does is it moves the money that was appropriated in contingency out, the appropriation authority out to departments to cover those 1% increases. With that, I'm happy to answer questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Ayer.
I move that we approve transfer TA-04-20.
Second.
Motion and a second. This again is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barris. Okay, we're down to council comments. Are there any council comments? Okay, so we need a motion to adjourn. And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, I adjourn.